It is 6:02 and we will call this meeting of the Curville City Council. We will call it to order, I'm sorry.
Where do you want to get you, our mayor?
I'm here with you, ma'am.
I'm here, all right. We've just had two hours of numbers, so forgive us if we seem a little, a little discombobulated.
Yes.
All right. Roman, are you ready for invocation?
I am. Please stand. And if you'll please bow your head, and I invite you to pray in your faith and tradition, as I pray in mine. God, thank you for this beautiful day you have blessed us with. I ask that your blessing on the people of Curville and those who have been called to lead our community, all in which we live, work, play, and worship. I command peace, community, unity, justice, and love over the city and in this chamber as we conduct this meeting. And I ask that you continue to guide us through the work, and for your glory, and for the betterment of Curville as a whole. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen. And if you'll join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Stuart, here you are. What do you have for us, Stuart?
Here I am, all right. We have a few events coming up. Oh, look, they're already up there on the screen. Upcoming library events, these are all before we meet again on the, what is it, the 23rd? So I'm just going to go through them real quick. The Brown Bag Book Club meets August 11th, I believe that's Thursday, for anybody who wants to join that. Family Movie, The Little Mermaid, is August 16th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the library. And then later on that afternoon is Food for the Soul. Movie Chat, where you talk about movies, I'm not quite sure which one will be this time, but that's August 17th from 3:30 to 4:30. The Shrouded in Mystery Book Club is August 18th from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m. And Author Talk on August 20th will feature the author Ben English from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. So those are the things that are going on at the library. We've got some things going on at Parks and Rec as well. We've got a big Saturday coming up. This Saturday is the Kids Triathlon, it's going to be at Singing Wind Park. There's still a chance to get in on that. So 7:30 a.m. onsite registration begins, 8:45, there's a pre-race meeting. And then at 9:00 a.m. the event begins. This is a lot of fun, we've done this, I don't know how many years now, but big turnout every year and a lot of fun. I encourage everybody to get their kids out there, it's great exercise. Later on in the day, actually that afternoon, we are closing out the pool season. So we always do that by actually opening it up, opening it up to dogs. So from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Wet 'n' Wag, August 13th, there at the Olympic Pool, free admission, bring your dog. The dogs seem to love the water. Makes some great pictures, as you can see, they're very sweet, very sweet pictures. This morning, and staff meeting, I said that next year we should change this up and instead of having dogs, have cats. I'm not sure the pictures would be as sweet, although I'm sure they'd be just as entertaining. All right, and then these are, these are actually after we, our next meeting, but I just want to go ahead and put them on everybody's radar. August 27th is the Curville Roadster, River Roadster Show. I think this is the third time we've done that, and a lot of fun, it's free, anybody can bring their roadsters there. It's kind of a pull-in, pull-out all through the day, so, excuse me, from 4:00 p.m. So be sure to come out and see that. And then, as we mentioned last time, we have the Curville River Festival coming on the 17th of September. Kyle Park will be the lead act for that, so keep that on your calendar as well. And that's it for me, so I'll turn it over to you all if you have any.
Counsel, anyone have something they'd like to announce? Stuart, I would like to thank you for the newsletter.
Oh, sure.
Another good job.
Thank you.
And if you have not looked at that, it is available on the Curville City website, so thank you.
Make it general, it's not about an event.
Oh, go ahead.
I just want, I just want to wish everyone that has children or grandchildren or is married to or is an educator, just best wishes for the upcoming school year. And thank the school district for the implementation of additional safety that they've providing to our campuses. And thank the Curville Police Department for participating in the adding of two new resource officers. And apologize to my sixth grader for not being at Meet the Teacher tonight, so, anyway. I just wanted to just throw that out there because next time we meet, school will have already started.
Well, and I would like to just add to that, just pray for them every day. Our teachers, our administrators, bus drivers, everybody that's involved. And don't stop praying, not just one or two days as school starts, but all year long, so. And if you have kids that are in your neighborhood, wish them well and pat them on the back. And same thing with our teachers, so it's really, really important, they need our support. All right, we will present a Curville Kindness Award to Sylvia Fritz Dobbs and David Fritz. Are they here?
They're over here.
There they are. Please come up. And who else do you have with you here?
I'm the city director.
Yep, city director.
Oh, yes.
Actually, I'm not a job, so I guess I come from a different position.
Didn't expect you up here.
That's okay. The City of Curville recognizes Sylvia Fritz Dobbs and David Fritz and Minimart.
Thank you.
With the August 9th, 2022 Curville Kindness Award. For a second consecutive year, Hill Country Minimart and co-owners Sylvia and David provided sponsorship for the annual Fourth of July fireworks show at Louis A. Park, the largest fireworks show in the Texas Hill Country. I think we were the only one. This year's show was enjoyed by the largest crowd in the history of the fireworks show and offered a fitting and spectacular conclusion to the final performance of Robert Earl Keen at the annual Robert Earl Keen's Fourth on the River Concert Extravaganza. The Curville Kindness Program offers a sincere thank you to both of you and to Minimart for your unwavering commitment to serving the local community, and it's signed by all of the council. And we do thank you.
Thank you.
They were beautiful.
Good.
Thank you. And we just, we appreciate you guys so very, very much. Would you like to say something?
We just love our community and from our family, my husband and I, and Razor and David's wife Stacy and their two kids, Gage and Lucy, we're just carrying on the tradition. We're going to, Minimart's going to turn 50 next year.
Congratulations.
And our parents started it, Junior and Ann, and they're not with us anymore now, but they loved everybody too. So we're just, our people just, we all thank you.
Well, you are wonderful to our community.
And we try to support.
Not with this and many, many other ways.
So we try to.
And we appreciate you, so.
Thank you.
Give this to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we have our citizens and visitors forum. Shelly, do you want to read us in there?
Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the speaker request form and give it to the city secretary. The speaker request form must be submitted to the city secretary before the item is called or read into record. City council may not discuss or take any action on the item, but may place the item on a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to four minutes, and we do have one citizen speaker signed up, James Wright.
All right. Mr. Wright, here he is. Sir, if you'll go to that microphone.
Got it, got it. Hello, y'all.
And tell us who you are and if you don't mind where you live.
All right, I am James Wright, and I live at, in Mountain Home. So what I have here is I have a few concerns, a couple of things. This is regarding the River Rat Pedal Cruise Boat. A concern that I have is I would like everyone to go to 100 Knapp Road, enter the navigation maps of their phone, and see where that puts you, if you can. So it puts you across the river. It doesn't put you in the location of where the activity or the boat is, okay? Let me just get my glasses on. So the 2050 Plan, does it call for an app to help find parks and recreation amenities by any chance?
I'm not sure I can answer your question.
It's not a Q and A, it's just a, it's just whatever comments you've got.
Yeah, okay, okay, all right. So my question is, is how are people to find the boat or without the signage? I have a temporary sign that I put at the light, Canes and Chili's, and in recognition to get the business, you know, located. And I've been told that the sign violates city ordinance. At the last, the last Business Expo, there was many vendors and visitors asked me what happened to the sign. So we're just kind of like, you know, trying to get some recognition here. I've called numerous offices and spoken to the Parks and Department and several departments, as well as a text dot, and no one has a solution for me. So I'm kind of trying to figure out that. I've also been, I feel threatened by the city code enforcement officer regarding the banner sign on my fence at the ramp. According to the license with the city, my fence is an alteration that I had approved by Parks and, Parks Department and the city permitted and approved. And according to page four on the agreement, all such alterations, additions, and improvements shall thereafter constitute part of the licensed premises. The code enforcement, the code enforcement office has threatened me by telling me that they can take down my sign or my banner on my fence, but the banner is, is my licensed premises. The banner is only, it's only my way of identification for the business, okay? I've also, I've asked Ashley Boyle and the Parks and Rec about putting a sign on the Junction Highway that would recognize where the boat is located at. I haven't had an answer from that. The latest deal is on July 22nd, 22, 8:57 p.m. Had some criminal mischief and some vandalism that occurred on the boat. I have a security for, the security footage to verify the event. Officer Smith, Austin Smith responded on the scene after my call and was told by Superior that he had no jurisdiction to cite the offenders due to the fact that I do not own the property. Even though they were on a private boat that I owned, the officers stated that he did not know who owned the boat ramp. But according to my license agreement with the city, the city owns the boat ramp.
Mr. Wright, that was a buzzer for your time.
Okay.
Obviously, we need some, some conversation sometime, some, somehow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be more than happy to follow up with you about that again.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it, all right.
Thank you.
All right, before we go to the consent agenda, I have been informed that the applicant for 5F, the STR for foothills, has pulled that for tonight, and we will not be addressing 5F.
And they requested that that be moved to the September 13th agenda.
September 13th, all right. We don't need to vote on the, the moving it to September 13th, do we?
No, we'll put that on, of course, that'll mean a bunch of public notices in the newspaper and just the process that we use to get it on this agenda as well.
Okay, all right, all right. Counsel, do any of you have any objections to our pulling that? Brenda?
No.
Just clarification, will they have to, let's say that some, whatever legal issue is going on right now, it continues to extend, will they have to come back to us and let us know again? Will they have to put in a request for an agenda item? How does, how does that work? Because it's my understanding, to our procedural rules, any item to defer anything has to go through a motion of counsel for, to identify the specific date it's going to come back to us, so we're aware.
This is really driven by the applicant in this case. And so, well, I agree with you, if you want to make a motion and a vote, you could do that. It'll really be up to them as, as, you may be more aware than I am, there's, I guess there's some pending legal issues. And so the applicant had asked you all to defer this to a later date and suggested September 13th.
Yeah, that's just what staff told us, I'm not aware of any details, but, okay.
Mike, do you feel it's necessary that we take a vote?
That's up to you, I mean, if that's in your rules, you could do that. It'll come back by, virtually by operational law, if they put it, if they decide to move forward, you know, pursuant to our zoning code, they already had the discussion and action from planning and zoning, so it'll just, you know, come back at that meeting.
And last question, is there any timeline or anything that we have to follow when the appeal, in the appeal process? Or is it, because I know there's a 30-day thing on certain things for P and Z, but when any appeals or anything comes to council, there's no timeline or anything we have to follow, right?
This will just defer all of the timing and perhaps, you know, and again, this is, we don't get this.
I know, yeah.
At all, and I, in my opinion, we ought to defer to the applicant and let them work through whatever issues they're working through.
Counsel, do you feel we need a motion to, to do this? Are you comfortable if we do not?
Sure, if we, if we do it on the September, and I guess if we need to defer it again, if they come back to us, I'm fine with that. That works, just getting clarification.
Kim?
No, I don't need a motion.
Joe, Brenda? Okay.
Okay.
Then we will do that.
Thank you, sir.
So, all right, let's proceed with number four, the consent agenda, and Shelly?
There has been no citizen pulling anything off the consent agenda. Would you like me to read them in?
Read those in, please, yes, thank you.
For A, purchase of laptops and docking stations necessary for the operations of the police body cameras not to exceed $96,792.10, as approved by council on 7/12/2022. For B, City of Curville Town Hall meeting minutes July 25th, 2022. For C, City Council Workshop Minutes, July 26th, 2022. For D, Employee Benefits Trust Meeting Minutes, July 26th, 2022. For E, City Council Meeting Minutes, July 26th, 2022.
All right, is there anyone who wishes to pull any one of those items? If not, do we have a motion?
Move that we approved the consent agenda items from A through 14.
I know, our numbers are rattling around. All right, a second? Brenda? Thank you, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it is approved unanimously, thank you. Like I said, just forgive us, our heads are full of numbers. All right, we will go to public hearings and resolutions, number five. And Drew, if you will give us your information, please.
Before we start, the temperature, we put up just a little bit, it's kind of cold in here for me.
Oh, cold, really?
It's a little cold in here for me, thank you. Yeah.
A little warm for me.
Are you getting sick?
Conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting Lot 1, Block 1, Limestone Beach Edition, and more commonly known as 1959 Arcadia Loop South. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R2 and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. We do have two citizen speakers signed up, and this is a public hearing.
Real quick, before I dive into that one, I just want to give a quick update as it relates to short-term rentals. We do have a pending code amendment coming to council. P and Z made a recommendation last week at their regular scheduled meeting. Again, this will be on September 13th for a public hearing and first reading for the code amendment, and September 27th for the second reading. We will continue accepting future applications for conditional use permits. As citizens do have that right to continue to apply until the effective date of the proposed amendment. So that'll, we will still have some more cases coming before P and Z and council as we move through this. I know we had previously talked about a moratorium, I've had quite a few questions about that, and other staff members have as well. Didn't feel that it really met the full requirements of the state law for a moratorium. And on top of that, the moratorium process takes almost as long, if not longer, than doing the code amendment. So we still have that same issue of, or potential issue of agenda items stacking up while the moratorium was going into place, so. As you guys know, the conditional use permits are on a case-by-case basis with some deference to similarly situated properties. There is no, no automatic termination after a set time period. It is a zoning entitlement, so it does run with the land, and would not run with ownership. I think those covers most of the questions that I've gotten the last few months, just in general around short-term rental and the conditional use permit process. So diving into this one, this is a resolution, Shelly mentioned, for 1959 Arcadia Loop. Now, there are several, as you know, on Arcadia Loop fronting the river. And they do have, of course, a garage and adequate parking on the existing driveway. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved this on July 28th.
Drew, do you know if that vote was unanimous?
That's what I was just looking, I don't have the vote on that one.
I believe it was.
This one was.
This one was, I believe, yes. Would you please answer any questions before or after the public hearing?
Drew, can you tell us how many other CUPs we do have on Arcadia? Do you have that number? I know there are several.
I think we've approved four so far, and actually do have one other pending application. So that would be six, including this one.
Okay. All right, Counsel, do you have any questions, or Drew, before we hear from the applicant, if they are here?
And we haven't received any comments.
Not received any additional comments on this one.
To date.
Correct.
All right, is the applicant here?
Matt Sletton, 324 Clay Street. I am the, the owner of the, the local management company that would be managing this potential short-term rental on behalf of the, of the owners. The owners are our local Curville residents, in fact, they live just one lot over from this particular property. So they will be literally one door down from this home, as well as having us as a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week backup as well at the place. And obviously, this is a, a riverfront property along Arcadia Loop with, with a, with a great amount of space and distance on each side of the property from, from any other current long-term residence that's on there, as well as, of course, across, across the street is a, is a commercial property that is also owned by, by the applicants.
All right, Counsel, any questions for Matt? Any comments at the moment? One thing that I think we all need to be very aware of as, as we make any decisions, that we are looking, even though there are some proposals out there that, that we will look at later on, at this time, that we are looking at, I will call them the present, not old, but the present requirements, and, and that we are looking at, is, does it fit all of those for the use? Does it fit those requirements? So, all right, no one, any question, no one has a question?
I do have a, not for, not for Matt, but based on your statement, yeah, we need to look at it under the current.
Under the current, yes.
However, it was defined for us earlier that we need to determine whether the use is appropriate for a particular property and whether the use is only appropriate with conditions. That was given to us earlier this week.
Exactly, right, yes. Appropriateness and/or appropriate with conditions. All right, and Brenda, anything you would like to say?
No, ma'am.
Joe, anymore? Roman? All right, do, thank you, Matt, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, that's right, we need to open at this time, 6:27 for a public hearing. Shall we, any speakers?
Yes, ma'am. Nikki Canes.
Hi, Nikki Canes, I live at 1809 Mountain Laurel, and thank you for letting us come here today. I don't want to repeat everything that I probably said at P and Z or other places, but I did have a couple of concerns. I know you've received a lot of letters and emails and comments voicing their opposition for any additional STRs, and I was interested in how many were in Curville. Since the town hall, I've spoken to two separate staff members, city staff members, who told me that there were about 80. And then Mr. Paxton was reported to have said that there were 30 R1s and 30 R1As. I had already done a public information request, and what I got was surprising because it's a total of 39. But what surprised me even more is that 20 of those, now, the 39 includes from 2017 to current, to our, to date. But out of those 39, 20 of them have been approved since July 1st, so 20 in seven months. So I know you just mentioned, Madam Mayor, that you are looking at it case by case, and you have that line of prerequisites to meet. But I'm, I'm asking, because we know how long it takes to get affordable housing built, you know, we're talking three, four years before development is actually move-in ready. I'm, I'm asking, unless you're legally required to do so, I'm asking that you table all of the short-term rentals from here. We all know that we've, we're getting this, what are they called, the ordinance from planning and zoning, and just me personally, because I love my neighborhood. I'm, I'm looking to, to see what you will think, and after looking at that ordinance. So I'm, I'm actually asking that you'll just table anything from here on out unless you actually legally have to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, do you want to weigh in on that for us?
Well, I can, and I can do it in open session, or I can do it in executive session. I mean, I would give you legal advice.
I feel that we really should not be doing it, that we need to move ahead with, with what we have before us. There will be more coming. Counsel, do, do you have?
If, if counsel is willing to have this in open session, otherwise, executive session's fine. But in the spirit of trying to at least get the question answered that's been posed to many of us on council and stated, let's, just humor me for a minute, let's just say we were to table every short-term rental that was up here on us, on our agenda, and then we adopted a different.
Point of order, this is not the subject of this item on the agenda.
Excuse me, point of orders are not allowed by members of the public, only by members of council, and I'm not violating, I'm not violating any rule.
This is not the subject matter that's on the agenda.
Mike, would you help us out here?
Can I, can I continue before we actually decide whether I'm, because it, it has to do with this agenda item. I'm not saying I'm going to table this or anything, but for the sake of answering the question.
It's about the issue at hand.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I would raise a point of order then, saying that members of the public are interrupting us.
They'll let you finish, and Mr. Strachey will have you later.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
If, if we were to table every short-term rental on our agenda, and we were to have a different ordinance, you know, what, it's probably September, October timeframe, the ones that we tabled would still be considered, yes or no, still be considered under the ordinance that we have today?
Right.
Right, okay. Right, so that's what I'm trying to get answered, so even if we were to table them, because they're coming before us. So even if we were to table them, because they're coming before us today, all, everything that, no matter how far, really, that we table them, we still have to consider them under the requirements and the ordinances that's before us today.
That's a correct assessment.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Kim, any comments, thoughts, Joe?
I think Roman makes a good point. Yes, there's been a lot of people requesting that we table, but even if we table, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have the effect that some people are hoping for.
Brenda?
Yeah, I agree.
All right.
Do you have another citizen speaker signed up?
All right.
Peggy McKay, 103 Westchester. I was at all those P and Z meetings, and there was a comment made that concerned me by one of the STR owners. And she said there were a lot of STRs flying under the radar that were not licensed, that were not on the city's list. And it concerns me, if we do have that list, how can they be regulated? You don't know about them, you can't regulate them. So the question is, how do you find out how they are, or where they are? But the other, in summary, of all the STRs, I was about to say expedite the resolution, the dates are already set. I would like to, for the city to have a list of all the STRs that are available, either booked now or available for booking. And I would like to see specific language, and if I understood, Drew, the grandfathering goes with the land, not the use of the land, correct?
The conditional use permit goes with the property.
With the property.
Is that the only way we can handle that for grandfathering?
Peggy, I think you've got a lot of questions.
No, I just have one more. There were just, I was trying to summarize it. The other one is the accountability and penalties. Do we have any for those who deliberately avoid registering because they don't want to follow rules or regulations, or whatever reasons? But I would like to know about the difference in grandfathering with the use and with the land, if there's only one way to do it.
Peggy, I would recommend that you make an appointment and visit with Drew, or possibly with Julie, and they can answer most of those questions for you.
Mayor, and I could, if you want me to, I could add something here.
Okay.
We just started requiring CUPs for this use with the adoption of the most recent zoning code. So we do, we do have a few out there, I don't know if "few" is the correct term, but we have some out there that are operating legally, but they're just grandfathered, because they were in use prior to the adoption of our zoning code. I think we have a good handle, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we have a good handle on who those, in general, who those people are, because they have to pay taxes, they have to pay the hot tax. So we get a listing of those properties as well. But in terms of regulating them, they can, they are grandfathered until such time as they cease their use, and then we could require them to go through the CUP process. But the other thing that I know council is considering doing is going through a licensing and registration process. And so then we would get a great deal of these under, you know, our records as to who really is out there, who's operating, and have a modicum, of course, of regulations that apply to the operation, because that's what licensing would do. It would apply to the operation, it wouldn't apply to the use, but it would make sure there's some health and safety issues that are addressed.
And I was thinking the exact same thing, and to clarify as well, the ordinance comes first, and then the licensing piece, you won't find when that draft ordinance comes out, but it is a separate consideration that I expect, I think we probably all expect to come forward to council once we can get the ordinance in place.
I think the plan is to bring those two.
They're gonna come concurrently?
Parallel.
Okay, okay.
We don't have one, you know, hanging over without the other finished.
But they'll be, they will not, they will not be codified together, one's a.
No, they'll be, I mean, the plan right now is to bring you those two ordinances, September 13th for consideration.
The licensing is also an ordinance.
No, an amendment to the zoning with the amendments that you all want, and then a licensing plan to license all STRs in the city, which would include grandfathered uses as well.
And it would include penalties for nonconformance, for lack of a better term?
Well, it, you know, right, proof will be in the details. I haven't worked through the licensing plan with staff and what they're, what they'll propose. But ostensibly, for instance, if they don't come in, and if, and this will apply to the grandfathered uses and those uses that are allowed by right. So in, you know, in those zoning districts where you don't have to get a CUP, you'll have to go get a license from the city. If you don't pull a license and we find out that you're operating, then ostensibly, we can enforce that against you.
And I'd like to ask another question. The zones where STRs are allowed by right, let's say they do have a lot of parties, and they do get a lot of complaints. Because they're allowed by right, can they have their license pulled for multiple complaints, or not, because they have the right to be there?
We would anticipate that is an element that we would incorporate into the licensing piece.
Okay.
And this is good information, but we're a little bit ahead of ourselves.
Yeah.
Because those are things we cannot include tonight. Mr. Strachey, did you have, did you need to comment? Thank you. Anyone else, Shelley?
No one signed up, however, it is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing, yes. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, at 6:39, we will close the public hearing. Council, any comments that you would, further comments, Roman, Kim, Joe, Brenda? All right, do I hear a motion for 1959 Arcadia Loop?
I move we adopt Resolution Number 44-2022, granting a conditional use permit.
I'll second that. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Thank you very much. We will move on to 5B. Shelley?
Resolution Number 45-2022, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of part of Lot 3, Lot 4, of Block 4, Fairview Edition, more commonly known as 330 Guadalupe. Said property is located within a single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning district R1A, and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There is one citizen speaker signed up, however, it is a public hearing.
Drew?
Thank you, Mayor, this is 330 Guadalupe Street, zoned R1A for a short-term rental unit. There are multiple CUPs approved and grandfathered in this area. They do not currently have parking, but they have ample room to install parking, to meet the parking requirements. And it does actually have dual frontage on East Shady Lane and Guadalupe Street. And this was approved by the planning commission with a 6-0 vote.
So it was.
I don't know if we've ever, have we seen one before that doesn't have the parking in place already?
We've had, we've had several that planned to install the parking if approved.
So the part, the space is there?
Correct.
There's just nothing in place that says parking?
Right, the existing driveway is a gravel driveway up to the, up to the house. One car width, Mr. Howard and I talked, and he will expand that parking lot, or add parking off of the backside, since he does have dual frontage, so.
The condition use permit is not actually administratively applied until the improvement is made.
Yes, understand.
Although maybe approved by council, if that's your desire, we hold that until the improvement's made.
Would you go back?
The driveway has been bored two weeks ago, so the parking isn't in place.
Okay. Thank you. Would you go back to the previous slide? Okay, there is an STR, it does, and that fronts on?
There's one on East Shady to the north, and there are two grandfathered on Guadalupe to the south.
Okay. So how far, the one that, the little one there?
Excuse me.
Just, do you have any idea how far apart they would be?
Maybe 100 feet.
Okay.
Because the street width's about 50 feet, and obviously, they're not directly across, so.
Okay.
The development across the street with the eight units around the main house, that's a STRs, too.
It is not. That is an apartment complex, those are long-term rentals.
Long-term.
I didn't know.
Okay. All right. All right, before we hear from the applicant, any, any other questions? All right, would the applicant like to speak to us?
My name is Larry Howard, I live at 503 Oakland Hills. I don't have anything else to add but what I submitted to P and Z, the appropriate application for an approval of a CUP for 330 Guadalupe Street, and it was approved 6-0. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
At 6:43, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone signed up to speak?
Peggy McKay. No.
Okay.
She passes.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, at 6:43, we will close the public hearing. Council, comments, questions? Roman, nothing?
No.
Kim? Joe? You're a quiet bunch here.
I'll move, though, to approve Resolution Number 45-2022.
All right, thank you, Brenda, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously. All right, 5C. Shelley?
Resolution Number 46-2022, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of Lot 1A of the replat of Lots 1A and 1B, Block 81, JA Tavi Edition, and more commonly known as 1229 Jefferson. Said property is located within a single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning district R1A, and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There is one citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
All right. Drew?
There we go. This is 1229 Jefferson Street, zoned R1A. And there is conditional use permit approved to the east, or excuse me, to the west on Aransas Street. And you can see there's three others within general proximity, roughly 500, 600 feet apart. And same thing, currently do not have the full parking, but they do have room and plans to install parking if approved.
Okay, and if you go back one, Drew, again, the property on Aransas, again, and I know I'm asking you things that you really don't know, any?
Yeah, I'd say roughly 50 to 100 feet.
Okay.
And that one was approved about a year ago.
Okay.
And they've been operating since.
Okay. All right. Is the applicant here? Okay, would you like to speak to us?
My name is Valerie Grimes, and I own the property at 1229 Jefferson Street. I don't know if he said or not, but it was also unanimously approved by P and Z. And, and yes, there are currently two spots, but there is room for a third, I just wanted to wait to spend the money after approval.
Okay. Any questions for her?
Thank you.
No? All right, thank you. At, do you have, do we have anyone signed up?
The person signed up declined to speak.
That's right, it was Peggy, I'm sorry. All right, at 6:46, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, at 6:47, we will close the public hearing. Council, what's your pleasure? Any comments, any questions, anyone?
I'll move that we approve Resolution Number 46-2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll respond with, you raise your right hands, please, and it is unanimous. All right, we will move to 5D.
Resolution Number 47-2022, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of Lot 19, Block 1, Meadowview Estates, addition, more commonly known as 426 Meadowview. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R1, and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. We do have one citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew?
Thank you, Mayor, this is 426 Meadowview, zoned R1. And there are none within the reasonable proximity, grandfathered or approved by conditional use permit. And they do have one space in the garage, one space in the driveway. We did talk to the applicant, that driveway would probably have to be widened, because that third space they're showing is actually out over the property line in the right-of-way. But they, they said they'd be willing to do that if approved, so.
Say that again?
They may have to widen the driveway to get that third, third parking space.
Right.
But again, awaiting approval.
Mr. Paxton, is this the first one tonight that's actually in R1? Other two looked like they were, I mean, the other three were.
One was R2.
R1A, one was R1A, and one was R2.
On this agenda, yes, this is the first R1, and this one was approved with unanimous vote.
Any other questions, council, for Drew? Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would you like to speak to us before we open the public hearing?
Hi, we're Catalina and Johnson-Landon, we are the property owners at 426 Meadowview. This is the first time we're hearing about the parking issue. There, it had been submitted with three parking spots and measurements as well, so I'm not familiar with.
Although, I'm sorry, I thought I was planning to talk to you about parking, but we can talk about that.
So we are aware that there is a letter that was submitted in opposition of our application, and I just have a couple of notes I'd like to provide in response to that letter. First, on our street, there are multiple businesses, including a Whataburger, Kerrville Church of Nazarene, a Child's Play Learning Center daycare, Newmark Convenience Store. There is an apartment complex behind us and up the street. There is also Carter's Automotive, CD Flooring, and a construction company two doors down from us. So it is not a very quiet street already. The amenities that are near our property are a VA Medical Center, Flat Rock Park, Shriners University, Kerrville-Shriners Park, G Street Trailhead Trail, and Lewis Hayes Park is within two miles as well, approximately two miles. We just want to note that we had five neighbors in support of our application. We were the only neighbors at the P and, we were the only applicants to the P and Z meeting that had neighbors coming to support us. And these are the neighbors that are directly next to us and across the street from us. Four are retired, and three are widowed women. The main street project that's currently under consideration to change from high-density to a multifamily is right around the corner from us as well. So again, I just want to reiterate, the street is already busy, and granting a CUP will not increase traffic in any kind of significant way. And there will not be a noise problem, as there's already multiple, multiple businesses and a construction company, so there is already noise there.
We also don't want parties there.
We've used, we ourselves have used short-term rentals since 2013, and since we started using them, we have only used them exclusively when we travel. And our reasons for that is because we have pets, and we also don't like the noise that you get in a hotel at the time that people are checking out or getting up. So we have never had a party in any of our short-term rentals when we've traveled, and we're always respectful. That community or the people and users and owners of short-term rentals are rated and can impose additional rules as well. We have invested significantly in this house, and we have done a complete remodel and renovation of it. So we don't want our work destroyed. We also have camera in place and agreement with neighbors to report anything. And our neighbors, um, are actually wanting to participate in part of the management of this short-term rental. So us, using their services as a benefit to our neighbors. And so we respectfully request our application for the conditional use permit be granted.
Your.
Will you be managing it then? My understanding is yourself?
Yes.
Between you and your neighbors?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Counsel, any questions for them, any comments? All right, at six fifty-three, we will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
Catalina and John Landon were the ones that had signed up.
Okay. Oh, okay, good. All right, at six fifty-three, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number forty-seven dash twenty-two.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Joe. All right, uh, we have a motion and a second to approve this, uh, STR. Everyone in favor, please raise your right hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, Shelley, five E.
Resolution number forty-eight dash twenty-two, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of lot three B, block forty-five, Westland addition, and more commonly known as four ten Circle. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R one, and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. This is an appeal by the applicant, and we do have one, two, three, four citizen speakers signed up.
Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. This is zoned R one. Uh, there are no, no short-term rentals in immediate vicinity. As you can see on the map, there are two. Trying to get you a rough estimate on distance there. I would say well over five hundred feet from this property at least. They have adequate room for parking as the property is existing. And this was a three-three vote from the Planning and Zoning Commission, so it is an appeal by the applicant for counsel consideration.
All right, uh, counsel, any questions for Drew before we bring the applicant up? And listen to the others.
I just want to clarify for the, the parking, it doesn't, this is, and this is the first time I'm asking this question, I think. It doesn't, the parking for the width of the, whatever driveway, whatever they use, doesn't need to be wide enough for a car, let's say, i- in this image, for car number one to get out of that driveway because of car two, three, and four blocking it in.
That's correct.
It does not need to be that wide, right?
It does not. Our code does allow tandem parking, um, as illustrated here.
It does allow?
It does. And that's for single-family or the short-term rental, both.
Just clarification, I was curious on that. Thank you.
All right, are the applicants here, and would they like to speak to us?
Good evening. My name's Patrick Dunn, and, uh, my wife, Susan, um, are the owners of four ten Circle Avenue. I'd like to start by reviewing the Kerrville Community Vision Statement and explain how our request so closely aligns and supports our community's vision. Kerrville will be a vibrant, welcoming, and inclusive community. To be welcoming, Kerrville needs options for guests and visitors that choose not to stay in large hotels. Today's travelers are choosing to stay in short-term rental properties more and more. Without increasing these options for our visitors, we'll be losing guests to other nearby communities and not supporting economic growth and development. Bullet one respects and protects the natural environment that surrounds it. Our home will be a zero-scape landscaping, landscaping approach. We'll have, we have rainwater harvesting covering sixty-five percent of our roof and use the collective water for our trees and, uh, other plants. We're providing bikes and kayaks to our guests to come enjoy the trail, the parks, and the river. Our guests will come to Kerrville to get outdoors and enjoy the natural environment. We'll be ho- Bullet two seeks to provide, attract economic growth and development. We'll be hosting guests at our home who come to the city and region with plans to see our area's attractions, dine in our restaurants, and buy from our shops and stores. They will put money into our economy and help drive sustained economic growth and development. Bullet three provides opportunities for prosperity, personal enrichment, and intellectual growth for people of all ages. Because we hope to operate our own as a short-term rental property, we are able to move forward with our dream and purchase the house in Kerrville. This will be a huge enrichment for our lives now and give us the opportunity to enjoy Kerrville for extended periods come our retirement years. With the renovation we're currently doing and our ongoing maintenance, we'll be increasing property values, thereby increasing revenue to the city, which in part goes to the school system and supports other city functions, such as our art and cultural center, all of which helps with intellectual growth of residents of all ages. Bullet four does so while preserving the small-town charm, heritage, arts, and culture of the community. Finally, my wife is an artist. Our time in Kerrville will bo- boost, boost the community's arts and cultural scene while maintaining the small-town charm through supporting the shop local movement. We're decorating our home with her artwork and including painting a mural on the side of the garage facing our backyard. We intend to market our property as an art destination, and we believe our guests will enhance our community's arts and culture while also maintaining its small-town charm. So you can see we very effectively support all points of our community's vision. Next, I'd like to address the top three comments and concerns raised at the P and Z meeting in July, where we initially presented our application. First, there was comments about increased traffic. I've done calculations that show that with the forty percent occupancy, which is higher than average for the market here, there'll actually be a twenty-five percent decrease in traffic in the neighborhood. Second comment was regarding safety and security. Specific comments made about windows in the home were painted shut. They in fact are not. They're all free. There is no fire hazard due to lack of egress through any of the windows homes. While original to the home, our electrical system is very safe, uh, having gone through one, uh, renovation and upgrade. And then most recently safely pa- uh, fully passing two home inspections, one paid for by the seller and one paid for by us, done by Mr. Mike Mullins, U.S. Air Force Retired. There were absolutely no findings related to the electrical system. The home will have two external-facing security cameras to monitor outside activity for the safety of our neighbors and our guests. All guests, guests will be screened in a minimum age of twenty-five years old. There'll be a maximum number of guests in the house of six. No large gatherings or parties will be permitted. The third point raised was concerns about property values decreasing. In fact, research done by informs and published by Globe Street found the following. A one percent increase in Airbnb listings leads to a point zero-two percent increase in rents and a point zero-two-six percent increase in house prices in the median owner occupancy rate. So, uh, that in fact shows that property values are not adversely affected. So that summarizes, um, what I wanted to present and appeal the decision by the P and Z, uh, committee. And, uh, I appreciate your consideration in approving the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions for him?
No.
Are you going to, you would manage it yourself?
No, we would, we would hire a local service to do the upkeep, maintenance, cleaning, and management. Similar to, uh, uh, Matt.
You would be living in Kerrville?
No.
No, you do not.
We do not.
All right. All right. All right, uh, thank you. At seven oh two, we'll open the public hearing. And who's first?
Mary Holden. Mary Holden, I live at four zero four Circle Avenue. As you can see by the, the petition that I submitted, the majority of the property owners within two hundred feet of four ten Circle Avenue oppose a conditional use permit for a short-term rental. Also, three of the P and Z commissioners agreed that an STR was a bad fit for our neighborhood. As one of the commissioners said, when I drove by, I saw the neighborhood had nothing to offer a short-term rental, to which another commissioner replied, "The best you can offer to a short-term renter is a bicycle ride to Whataburger." And I couldn't advise that because of the narrow streets and traffic. It's just not a good fit. This working-class residential neighborhood is comprised of healthcare workers, mechanics, tradesmen, veterans, newlyweds, young families, multi-generational families, multicultural, multicultural families. We are not a bunch of fearful old people as you have might, uh, been led to believe. We live in a primary residence here, and we vote here, and that should outweigh any proper owner that does not. Lastly, as you recall from the city council meeting July twelfth, the neighborhood enhancement team has adopted our neighborhood as their next project. In talking to Don Guillermo, their mission is to work with us by instilling pride in our appearance to enhance, enrich, and strengthen the ties of our neighborhood. So please help us preserve the char- the character of our neighborhood by opposing a conditional use permit and our short-term rental.
Thank you. Gail Wright?
My name is Gail Wright. I live a couple blocks away from four ten Circle. No one has ever said, "I want to live in the Westlands addition because the houses are all so cute and the neighborhood is well-kept." No one. We live here because it's where we could afford to buy or rent, or people have lived there twenty, thirty, forty years. Our neighborhood is between seventy and eighty years old. Our streets are already too narrow to accommodate the cars that park on the streets already. We have cars parked on lawns. We have people who think stop signs are suggestions. We have already had two hit-and-run incidences where children were involved. We have thirty code violations that have not been addressed. Our neighborhood is already one-third to one-half rentals. We don't need anymore. For this Houston-residing homeowner to claim that she's going to turn this property into a high-end rental is ridiculous. We keep hearing that we're getting worked up over things that haven't happened. They've happened in every other town over the, all, across the country. Why does Kerrville think that this won't, that they can do any better? You must get the ordinance on the agenda before any more SDRs are approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Loring?
Hi, I'm Kathy Loring, and I've lived in, in Kerrville for eight years, and I've known the Duns for about eighteen years. And they are extremely upstanding citizens, and they have high integrity. And I believe that allowing them to have a short-term rental in Kerrville is beneficial to the city of Kerrville.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the speakers that have signed up.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this particular property? Mr. Strakey?
Bruce Strakey, six fifteen Earl Garrett. It's interesting, earlier today, I heard someone say that there are regular towns, and then there's Kerrville. And it struck me at that moment because it's so true. Kerrville is so different than other towns. And it's a special place. It's a place we all love, and all the people who are here tonight have a passion about Kerrville. And they see it all in their own individual way. And it's a beautiful thing. And Joe, you talk about the history of the town and all the different ways over more than a hundred years, a hundred and fifty years, um, almost, a hundred and fifty years more, that people have seen Kerrville, and it's true, Kerrville's special, and it's not a regular town. And when we think about our 2050 plan, and we keep hearing about how it's talks in there about preserving neighborhoods, and that's really true. But preserving a neighborhood doesn't mean crystallizing it in amber and having it not change and pres- preserved as is for a thousand years. Preserving a neighborhood is about having it grow and develop through so that it carries on, and we bring those traditions with us. Some of them are worth keeping, and we bring them on, and some of them aren't, and we drop behind. But preserving a neighborhood is not mean that we keep it the same. When neighborhoods are struggling to preserve that neighborhood, instead of turning it into something that becomes commercial or squalor, we u- do things to build it up. And that's one of the things that's being missed in this conversation about SDRs, is that preserving a neighborhood is not making it into a museum. It is about preserving the property values, preserving the, the traditions that are worth keeping, and bringing properties up to current codes, cleaning them up, painting them, cleaning up the driveways, getting the, the cars off of the lawn, and bringing that neighborhood into the future. And it's just something that we don't hear very much, and I wanted to share it with you tonight since I guess we can, we can talk about, you know, whether it's the individual issue on an item, or we can talk about the broader issues, and I appreciate that. And thank you for pointing out that I was wrong earlier.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak to us? All right, and?
Right there.
We have one over here.
Right there.
Oh, yes, sir.
Hello, my name is George Waring, ABW Portraits Arts Murals. I live on the North Side Precinct Three of Kerrville, Texas. Just to follow up on his comment, I believe Kerrville's a great place and it needs to suffer up, especially on that part of the community because there's a lot of residential areas. I'm a homeowner myself, and it's one of those places to where entrepreneurship, and I'm in entrepreneurship myself, where we're trying to preserve the community and get growth and keep, uh, taxes down. Because I know y'all have a tax proposal coming up, but it's one of those things to where it's a small community where we're still trying to keep it intact, but it's a beautiful place. I just wanted to add to what he was saying, the whole Kerrville area.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, at seven ten, we will close the public hearing. And counsel, what is your pleasure? Any further questions or comments? Brenda?
Well, I do have a concern with the, um, with the petition because that is reflective of the neighbors and their opposition to this short-term rental. Full disclosure, I live in this neighborhood. I don't want to see a short-term rental in my neighborhood. However, having said that, the rules are the rules as they are today. So whether it's my neighborhood or anybody other, any other person's neighborhood, I have to vote based on what the rules are today, even if it impacts me, and I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, I've observed during these many meetings, uh, since May, that everyone likes short-term rentals until one is proposed for their neighborhood. And then even the people who own short-term rentals elsewhere are opposed. There seems to be a forming consensus that SDRs don't have a place in residential zones, especially R one. We've heard this at council meetings, at workshops, at a town hall, and in email communications. That consensus, that feeling, has not been codified into an ordinance yet. I think the five of us have struggled. I think the five of us have struggled, because there are several of these that we think are probably not appropriate for a particular property. And yet, under the current rules, which I hope we change soon, these homeowners, these investors, these people have spent life savings. They've spent harder money. They've put in sweat equity. They've hired people to help with the work. They've invested in neighborhoods which probably needed investment. And I agree with Brenda. Under the current rules, we are bound differently than we may be in the future.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Roman?
I have nothing to add.
Ken? All right. Do we have a motion for four ten Circle?
I move to approve resolution number forty-eight dash twenty-two.
And I second.
A second, thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. I think it's also important to say, in some ways, at this point, it doesn't, it doesn't mean anything. But one of the things that has been talked about is a licensing in the, in the future. And I think it's just something we should remember that any S T R that will, has been approved tonight, might be approved in the future. If that happens, they will all be under a licensing situation, and that license will have requirements. So whatever comfort that might give someone, I think it's going to make a difference in, in how people look at things, possibly. So just for what it's worth. All right, Drew, let's see, I think we need Shelley first.
Um, this item five F has been deferred, correct?
Yes, five has been, yes. So five, five F.
Has been deferred.
So we're on six.
Six, we're on six.
We're on six, yes, six A.
Six A, ordinance number twenty-two, twenty-two dash twenty-three, an ordinance creating a planned development district zoning for light commercial uses and a standalone parking lot on an approximate one point four nine acre property consisting of Lot twenty-one R, Lot G, B F Cage Edition, within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, more commonly known as eight twenty City Baker, and the property formerly known as eight twenty-nine Clay, adopting a concept, plan, and conditions related to the development and use of said lot, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have two citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
All right, Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a zone change request. Actually, the city is an applicant for this request, following court order from a case that we were involved in. It is eight twenty clay and the property that was eight twenty-nine clay. This property has been replatted into one lot. So that's the, kind of the history on the addressing there. This is, again, kind of pursuant to the court order. And go through some of the details here. And here is the concept plan showing the existing shopping center and the proposed parking layout for the parking lot on the Clay Street side or portion B of the property. There's pictures taken right before P and Z. And then pictures from the property. Planning and Zoning Commission, of course, did review this. The ordinance you have in your backup is the ordinance that was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, they did have a few amendments that they recommended. First being that there would be no vehicular access allowed to and from Clay Street. All traffic shall access from the City Baker Street property. A gate for emergency access may be installed if required by the fire department, and such gate to remain locked at all times, obviously subject to emergencies. The screening fence should be required across the front of Clay Street with a fifteen-foot setback, and solid waste collection bins and dumpsters are prohibited. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Go ahead.
Screening fence only on the front, not on the sides?
Sorry, on the sides. The, in your backup, the, let me pull up the ordinance real quick. Sorry, these were just the recommended amendments from P and Z.
So?
Section J, in your ordinance, page four, requires screening on the northeast and southwest properties if they are used for residential use. Backup here. So the screening fence would be required on the southwest property, where there is extensive landscaping. That landscaping would be, those trees would be allowed as the screening. The property to the northeast is not residential use. So screening, as drafted, screening would not be required on this side.
Oh, so only, only on one side?
So the, with the amendment from P and Z, it would be along the front and the southwest side.
It's already on the one.
If this property were ever to convert back to residential, then it would be required on that side as well.
They would have to go back and do that.
Right.
What about those trees, Drew? I've, what if they die in the drought? What happens?
Based on the conditions of the ordinance, they would have to replace it with fence or adequate landscaping.
Okay. And is he agreeable to those amendments?
I do not know.
I guess I'm confused, because we're, we're looking at something that's based on, on litigation that was settled. So I guess I like the ideas that Planning and Zoning is putting forth, but I don't understand where we have, what legal, legal rights we have, don't have, or what we're supposed to do with, with the draft versus the amendments to the draft versus any of the legal actions that we've been faced with.
This isn't occur every day. We are operating pursuant to a judgment and a court order that is very general in the sense it just says allow the use, allow the parking use. And so what Drew and I have done is attempted to draft an ordinance with the, you know, we've shared it periodically with the owner. And I'm not sure he's signed off on anything, but he was aware of the ordinance that went to Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission has now recommended, as is their role, a few additional changes to the ordinance as a means of mitigating the use and the impact of that use on the area. And so that's what we're bringing to you. And I think, I'm not aware that the owner has seen the ordinance. Certainly, he's aware that this, it was going tonight, and the packet's been in the, on the website. But all that to say is, you all have some, still some role here to apply zoning principles as you see fit, conditions and regulations to this ordinance, as you deem necessary for this use, so.
So we could add, subtract, leave it as it is?
You, you could, I think, within reason, you know. We don't want to take away where the, where the conditions are so onerous that it kind of guts the owner.
What if the applicant decides that he doesn't like it, then what happens?
We would work through that. I don't know. I mean, again, this doesn't happen, you know, not only just in Kerrville, Texas, but other cities as well.
Well, I mean, the, the goal is really to keep that traffic off that residential street. And it's kind of a win-win, in my opinion. If he gets his parking lot and we get our wall that keeps him out of that residential neighborhood or all that traffic out, so. I mean, I, I, I would move to approve with those conditions.
Do we, would you move to approve?
Well, it's a public hearing.
I'm here, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're not.
We're a little ahead.
Apologies.
That's okay. But, but questions, other comments? The fence, how much are we, how, how, how much are we telling? How much are we expecting as far as that fence goes? Is, are we giving specific, I know I read through it, but I'm not remembering. Yep.
It would be a six-foot screening fence, so solid wood or masonry fence from the edge of the existing landscaping to that fifteen-foot setback here. And then again, as recommended by the Planning Commission, across the fifteen-foot setback line.
Okay. All right, other questions? Roman?
I'd like to back up a little bit and get some clarification on a question that was also asked by a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is, backing up all the way to the start of this application, how, one, did Planning and Zoning Commission even consider this P D D without a waiver going and coming and being approved before city council? And how are we now seeing this? Because according to our zoning code, the minimum track size for a P D D is five acres. I think it was two acres at one point. And so we're looking at, this is approximately one point five acres. And the code says that no request that does not meet that five-acre requirement may be considered unless the applicant requests a waiver by filing an appeal with city council. And the appeal shall be reviewed in advance of the filing with the department, and then it may be approved by council in advance. So backing up to that, how, how are we even going through this process yet without that waiver?
Basically, this is a process that began in twenty seventeen, and then litigation was involved, and we're subject to a court order, right? And so we're trying to fit a round peg into a square, square hole. And so regardless, whether we do a P D D or some other aspect of the ordinance, we would be, you know, against the current zoning code in some form or fashion, and we just thought, I thought frankly, from a, from a perspective of just trying to get this done and comply with the court order, this is the way to do that.
See, because I get how the court order kind of requires us now to go against our zoning code as it applies to the, the parking, and how one cannot benefit the other kind of thing. So I get that part, but I just, I don't, I still don't understand how we, I know, so the court order kind of makes us go against that part. I don't understand how if we chose to use the P D D part, how we go against now another portion of it that the court order didn't really tell us to do.
Well, again, the court order was not very specific, and it was very general. And we just thought this way was the, the best way, the most efficient way to comply. And particularly because in part, parcel of this was, remember, this is now one lot, and there's no lot line. It's, it's, exists as one, one, one track, or actually one lot now, since it's been replatted. And, I mean, that, that's what I can tell you. It's the round peg, square hole, and be as efficient as possible to comply.
Mr. Hayes, are we the applicant for this?
We are, just because the order was directed to us.
Therefore, we can grant ourselves a waiver.
Well, that's essentially what you're doing, right? And, and again, you're not completely aligned with the zoning code, but I, I didn't think there was any other way that you were going to be completely aligned.
This isn't granting a waiver, though.
But we have, we have to allow, we have to allow them to have a parking lot.
I agree.
And, and this is, in this, in the way that this is being done is, is, I'm satisfied with it. I mean, we just have to allow a parking lot to be there. And if, and if the city attorney is telling me that he thinks this is the most expeditious way to solve this problem, then I, I, I think we should move forward with it personally. I don't, I don't know that the semantics of it's going to make any difference. That's just my, that's just my input on that.
No, yeah, I, I agree, and I see the fact that we have to go against our zoning code for the parking element. And I know that the court order was broad, and I saw a portion of it, I read a portion of it, that required us to do what we're doing today. But I don't feel comfortable going against any other part of our zoning code besides the fact that we have to grant that, that parking lot. And so if there was any other mechanism for us to use that, you know, I'd be, I'd be open to considering that. But the fact that we're going against another element of our zoning code that we're really not supposed to be doing, and the fact that a waiver could have come before city council before for this to be considered in order for that P D D process, that's what I'm, I have a lot of concerns that we're now going against other portions of the zoning code that we really, really shouldn't be going against, and if we were to use a different mechanism. So I'm not comfortable adopting the ordinance as a, without the waiver. A waiver could have, I mean, we could have probably even had a waiver come before us, one item before this one, or maybe not even, because it already went to our planning department. So in the way, and the application can't go to the planning department until it goes. A waiver is granted by council, so never mind to that example. But we're violating other portions of the zoning code or circumventing them in a way, and I'm not comfortable with that.
But we probably would have ended up in the same place.
We could have, right. It's following the process.
We would have ended up in the same place.
And the only other ways we could have, I, I think, and Drew, you can add to this, is create a separate zoning district, which I think would go against our comp plan and certainly the spirit of the comp plan, because we reduced the comp plan zoning districts pursuant to that plan from forty-nine to seventeen or whatever. The only other way we could do it is, is to actually go into the zoning code and make changes to allow this use. Then, and that would be frankly allowed citywide. And so, again, we were trying to minimize the, the action here to just this use and this property, and the way to do that, I think, was the P D D. And whether, we're, we're not seeking a waiver under our zoning code, but, but arguably, you're doing that, right? And you're gonna, you know, the, the recommendation from staff is to adopt the P D D as, as written or with the, with the changes requested by, recommended by P and Z. And again, I go back to, the, the process is inartful, but that's the hand we were dealt, and we're trying to make it as efficient both for the city as the applicant and certainly the owner, getting on, down the road where it's, where it's very clear to him on what he can and can't do with the property. And so the, the surrounding property owners have an idea on what the conditions are and regulations.
Brenda, any further comments? Joe?
Would it be difficult to amend the ordinance to require the screening fence on the, on the side next to the lot? What is not a residential lot?
No.
No.
It'd be a simple amendment, just referencing, instead of referencing the non-residential use, just that screening is required on both northeast and north, northwest and southeast.
I don't want to speak for the neighbors, but I think they'd want that screened.
I would think so, too. It just, it's kind of awkward just to have one side screened.
Yeah.
I think that, I think if you're going to bother to have him screen it, I think it should be the whole thing.
So you still have a public hearing?
We do, yes. Any other comments or questions before we go to a public hearing? Put that in mind. All right, at seven thirty, we will open the public hearing. Shelley, anybody?
Yes, ma'am. Wayne Franklin?
Wayne Franklin, I have property on Clay Street, and I live at the head of Clay on Remsall. We've been going over this issue for quite a while, obviously. So the whirlwind is, it started in two thousand seventeen, two thousand seventeen, and there were some applications made and rejected. Two thousand eighteen, very early in two thousand eighteen, went before the P and Z, and then it came to the city council. All those factors, with Clay Street being an old neighborhood, a neighborhood with no sidewalks, there's a, there's a retirement community up at the head of it, and in order for them to get to town, they have to walk or drive their motorized wheelchairs right down the street. So you don't want extra traffic. That's our Clay Street. What, what we're trying to do, let's see, two thousand eighteen, so two thousand nineteen shows up, and we're finding out a whole bunch of information here last week at the P and Z meeting. Turns out, there was a whole lot going on, and nobody ever knew about it. Mr., Mr. Paxton and Mr. Hayes. Mr., Mr. Paxton and Mr. Hayes put together a package with Mr. Motherall, the owner of this particular property, and they've completely eliminated the Clay Street address. You go into the map in the city directory, you can't find 829 Clay Street. It's gone. So where did it go? Well, these guys all got together and turned it into replating. Mr. Paxton said that last week. Well, we've did a lot of replating. Well, what happened? You replatted Clay Street, now it's called 830 Sidney Baker. Sidney Baker is our main traffic. Sidney Baker has the same address as a, as a residential piece of property on Clay Street? Something's wrong. So, so that's what happened. And, and then, because now we have a piece of real commercial property, 830, 830 Sidney Baker, and this thing now, it goes through this legalese, and, and 830 Sidney Baker finally winds up on the desk of Judge Patel. He looks at me, says, "Oh, we can't restrict a parking lot for a Sidney Baker commercial property," and rejected the whole thing. "Well, what do you think that parking lot is going to do to the values of the property, my property, right next door to it, any of the others in the neighborhood? Sure, we're, we're going to not let traffic get in through a fence." I don't think it's worth it. I think you should table that and think about it. It's up to you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Julie Reeves? Julie Reeves?
Hi, y'all. I'm Julie Reeves. I'm Julie Reeves, 853 Clay Street. Our family has owned that property since 1965, when I was a lot younger, and I do plan on keeping that and restoring it. And so I'm concerned about the neighborhood. I'm not going to just sell it and let it get knocked down and move off. I want to see the neighborhood protected. I want Kerrville to protect neighborhoods that are close to commercial. And we have to work with commercial to deal with encroachment. I realize things change, you know, we have to embrace change, I understand that. But, you know, as much as we appreciate the Planning and Zoning Board trying to make the parking lot look better, and Mr. Paxton, I understood when you called me that we were going to have the screening on all three sides. I thought we had, I thought that was already in the, the whole deal. On our side, on where we live, we're on the other side of the shopping center that comes up to that parking lot. And if you didn't screen it on that side, anybody from that parking lot can just drive right into his parking lot. Mr. Ray's shopping center, you can drive right into Mr. Rotherall's parking lot if you don't have that fenced on that side. And you can still see it, too, from our house, from the senior apartments, you have a, I mean, it shows on that slide. You can see the whole parking lot. It doesn't keep it from view from Clay Street residents if you don't fence it all the way around. So thank you, Mr. Herring, for mentioning that, because, yes, residents would want that screened on that other side. But, you know, I just think, a parking lot, really, does it have to be there? Yeah, I guess it has to be there based on the judge's order. I understood that he did this based on his interpretation of the code. So I don't know, that sounds kind of gray area to me, how you interpret something. But if we have to have the parking lot, we definitely want it screened, and we, you know, we're still going to have light poles. I mean, I don't know how we're going to ignore a parking lot there with a home right next to it. I've never heard anybody say to their real estate agent, "Please find me a home right next to a parking lot with those light poles. I want to see those poles." You know, you got to think about it. It's a neighborhood. It's an old neighborhood. People want to protect it. Kerrville should want to protect it. And like I said in the Planning and Zoning, y'all know what I'm going to say, you can put a pig on a homecoming float and drive it up and down the street and call it a homecoming queen, but it is still a pig, and this is still a parking lot, and it is going to be an ugly, isolark. You're going to have this fence or concrete, it's going to get graffiti, it's going to get, it's just, I don't foresee it going down well. But anyway, I do want to say that we really protest it. If we're stuck with it, I don't know, stuck with it. But please, let's at least make sure it is screened all the way around, because I understood that's what we were going to do. So, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I am Mary Lee Stewart-Jobbs, and I was born in the area, started 1940. So I know that area real well. And I think it's dreadful that y'all, somebody's going to let the guy move in here. Because it's not a, I can't talk, because I've had a stroke, and I cannot say this. They're not supposed to let him work on our side of the street like he's working. And he's only going to have houses, building, cars. No, they're going to do something big business there to come to die on us. So that's all I, I can't talk, so I'll go away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get 30 seconds more?
Yes.
I want to read something that showed up in this text, and it says, this is a short version of it. 829 Clay into a single lot would rezone 829 Clay from RT to 21N14. State law and city zoning codes require that certain notices and publications be made and public hearings be held in order to properly effective, effecuate a zoning change. Now here's the key part. And no notices have ever been sent, publications made, or public hearings held considering the zoning change impact of the proposed REPLAT 15. That's it.
Steph, will you clarify what, what requirements are?
That was...
Let's, let's see if there's anyone else that wants to speak.
Oh, first.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, at 7:39, we will close the public hearing. Kim, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to ask Mr. Paxton or, or, or one of the city staff to clarify that we are in a public hearing and the postings and the requirements.
Right. And that was in reference to the original plat request to replat the property into one lot, and a section of the old zoning code that didn't function well with plating requirements. So effectively would have rezoned the Clay Street portion of the property, which was why that plat was originally denied. Obviously, with the court case, the plat was approved, and the parking lot is allowed. So that's where that came from.
Well, we would be in a different position if we were not ordered by the court to do what we're doing. So we have to deal with what we have to deal with. Anything else to add, Drew?
So that, as you said, the court order requires the parking lot be allowed. The plan development, as Mr. Hayes said, it gives council the opportunity to put those conditions and still help protect the neighborhood to the best of your ability.
Mike, anything you want to add? Okay. All right, counsel. Brenda? Joe, any, anything else?
Ready with a motion when you're ready to take one.
Okay.
I just want to say I'm sorry that we're in this situation. I mean, I, it, we're, our hands are tied. So, so, you know, I think that we're going to do, they are, we, a judge told us we had to do this, so we have to do this. And so I appreciate what Planning and Zoning added to the situ, to, to make it more accommodating. It's not anything that anyone, or, it's not anything that, that, that I think anybody wants to have next door, and I recognize that as well. And I'm, and I'm sorry. I'm sorry that we're in this situation for, for the neighborhood. And I...
Is it too late?
We closed the public hearing.
We've closed the public hearing.
It's just that because of the statement she made, you have no choice. The judge was lied to. Basically, they replatted this and took it to the judge. They didn't give a notice to the city. They didn't give a notice to the people here. There was no public hearing. They just did it under the table, and then they took it to the judge. He didn't know the difference. He wasn't interested.
Thank you. We're dealing with what, what has come down to us from, through the courts. I'm sorry.
How do we reverse this, then? I mean, it, it's like everything is past.
Ma'am, we have closed the public hearing. I'm sorry. I have nothing to add. Roman, anything that you would like to add?
Just a couple of clarification questions about the address of it. What is the address? So that's been, you know, undisputed at P&amp;Z in here, too.
Right. So the addressing is not directly related to plating or zoning. It is a separate function city county, Cur-911 postal service. 829 Clay is still in our system. We have not retired that address.
Right.
The address, the, the property effectively has two addresses, 820 Sidney Baker and 829 Clay, but it has been replatted as one lot. So I think that's, that's the confusion, is they're not directly related to one another. Some shopping centers have multiple addresses, some have kind of secondary suite numbers instead.
Well, and, and the confusion for me was, because looking at our Kerrville map, property map, and looking at Kirkad, and the information that was given to us by citizens and our constituents, that it's only, it is platted as one property now, but all of the other services and online, you know, maps show there's still two addresses for this property, so.
That's correct.
That's, okay. And then, secondly, what, okay, we're allowing Portion B, which was the, the Clay Street side of it, to be used only for a standalone parking lot. Where is the definition of that found?
It's in the zoning code, and it originally started as a standalone parking lot. Obviously replatted it to one lot. It is now part of that lot. But again, the zoning does not, the current zoning does not allow parking.
Okay.
So we referenced it as standalone parking lot to be consistent with the history of this project. Effectively, it's an accessory parking lot to the main lot.
Okay. Is, could Steph give me like a, a, a link to where it shows that in the zoning code? Because I just couldn't find it myself.
It's in the definition section. I believe it's Article 3. I can send you a link.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, I'll just, closing comments. Yeah, we, it's a difficult situation that we're in because of the whole legal action that was taken. And then the option to appeal, you know, we didn't go through with that. So that was, that was an option there for us, too. And, and we had discussed that, we, we can't discuss that in length because it was discussed in executive session, but that option was not moved forward on to appeal the decision. So what we have before us, I'm not against allowing the use. It's the process that we're going about it, and a couple of things. I know this is only the first of two readings, so I may have, you know, different perspective on it come the second reading, whenever I get some more information. But I've gotten a lot of information thus far, and I, I can't, I'm not comfortable voting in favor of the ordinance with the process that we've used to go about approving this PDD.
Okay, thank you, Roman. He could not build a building on this property.
That is correct.
All right, are we ready for a motion?
I will attempt a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2022-23 with amending Section J to include screening on, on three sides of that parking lot.
All right. Do we have a second to that? Motion and amendment?
Go ahead.
Are you wanting to also move forward with the P&amp;Z's recommendations?
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Martin, can you pull up the PowerPoint?
Yes, right.
Adding...
Are those not in here? Those recommendations aren't in this document?
They're not. Martin, can you pull up the PowerPoint, please?
So it'll look different, okay. A second reading, will we have like a red line version of all of this together for, in one?
You will.
Okay, okay.
So the, the three things that came out of P&amp;Z were the screening, which Counselman Herring amended to be three sides.
Gate.
The gate, if required by the fire marshal.
Track.
And solid waste collection bins and dumpsters prohibited on, on Portion B.
So we will be amending the one to be...
Number one and two on your screen are impacted by, well, we'll go through that with Mr. Hayes, with the red line.
So you're comfortable, if we vote on this, we get a second and vote, you're comfortable?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a second?
No second.
Thank you.
No second?
I second.
Oh, you did second, I'm sorry. Everyone in favor, please raise your right hand. And we have four, two. And all those opposed, one. All right, thank you. All right. We are ready for 6B.
On this number 2022-24, ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, by changing the zoning of an approximate 22.03-acre tract of the Samuel Wallace Survey Number 113, Abstract Number 347, more commonly known as the north side of the 2300 block of East Main, from medium-density residential zoning district R2 to a multifamily residential zoning district R3, and providing other matters relating to the subject. This is an appeal by the applicant, and we don't have any citizen speakers signed up. However, this is above the...
All right, thank you. All right, Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the north side of 2300 block of East Main Street from R2 to R3 for multifamily. It is part of Strategic Catalyst Area Number 9, which is centered around Shriner University. And some of the uses or place types allowed would be transitional residential, which equates to multifamily uses. As you can see, several properties around are multifamily, both to the north, to the south. Plan Development District to the south is for multifamily, and this is consistent with the Kerrville 2050 plan. The property does have access to a collector's street, East Main, which is required by R3. Parking requirements would be met through the final design of any, of the project. And again, the Planning and Zoning Commission have had a 3-3 vote. Be pleased to answer any questions.
I just want to confirm that, excuse me, may I?
No, absolutely.
That, it appears that there are, there are R3 developments almost all around this, and then commercial developments across the street. Is that correct? That's the Atmas, Atmas office right there.
Atmas is here. This property is owned R3. Of course, this is Shriner University on both sides of Main, East Main. This is multifamily here. There's multifamily along Meadowview, and then multifamily here, and then, of course, the public safety facility.
Now, there's also a, an easement? Utility easement?
Power line or something?
There's an LCR easement along the backside of the property, which came up at the Planning Commission, would effectively increase the required setback for any development from the residents behind there.
All right. Roman, any further questions or comments before we list, have the applicant? Joe? Bennett? All right. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Mr. Stricki.
Bruce Stricki, 615 Earl Garrett. Glad to answer any questions. Since the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, this property has gone under contract yesterday. The, I don't have plans. I'd love to be able to tell you what they're going to do, but I don't know, and I wish I did, but I, I don't. But it is under contract. The, the real issue with this property is that R3 allows for larger lot sizes to do the same product with larger setbacks away from the residential neighborhoods. If you look at R2, the rare setback for a townhome is 15 feet. But in R3, it's 25 feet. And, and I can do, I can do, you know, many stories on a townhome in 35 feet in R2, but I can only do two stories in R3. So the reason the applicant wants it is, is that in the marketplace, this is what we've been asked for, and it allows for us to do, you know, private driveways and a parking like an apartment, but we might do cottages, or townhomes, or condominiums, and do that in a way that actually creates more setback. We also considered the fact that we have that LCR easement, which is 80 feet wide. So we've got a lot of buffer. There is one house at the end of Trails End that isn't, doesn't have that 80-foot LCR easement behind it, but every other house there does. And so we, you know, we really think that we've kind of thought through that, no matter what someone in the future brings as a plan to create a significant buffer from the R1 neighborhood that's nearby. This area, if you think about the Strategic Catalyst Area 9, it's actually encouraging us to do some... it's actually encouraging us to do some single family, which is being done in Weston Home Place two, forty-five lots. And then adding more apartments or condominiums or townhomes or duplexes and such in the transitional residential. And transitional residential on that previous slide that Drew had up is the brown area that we're down in here. And neighborhood residential is in the yellow area up to the northeast, which is off of this map, but on the other side of the Shriner University property. So we've also talked to Shriner University and unfortunately, none of them could be here tonight, but I promise you they are in support of this.
Mr. Stricki, did you happen to attend the P and Z meeting?
I did.
Did, can you give us a little insight as to what the concerns were, uh, that, that called for the three-three vote?
Well, one of the, one of the issues that brought the three-three vote is we were missing a member. But there were some folks who came and spoke. They spoke consistent with the letter that you've seen. They were concerned about the trees and the wildlife. I think I'm the only developer that has stood here in the last fifteen years that has said, maybe we need a tree ordinance. So wildlife, uh, trees, uh, storm water. Now, if we look at the topography, the topography, our waters go in actually the other direction. So I, I struggle to understand that one. And then, uh, the other question is they just didn't want to have apartments in the backyard. Now, I don't know that it's going to be apartments, to be honest with you. Most people these days are looking to do, you know, like BTRs and cottages and, and stuff. So you can't, you need the R three to be able to do that, build something and then rent it out. And you don't want it to be all individual lots from a planning standpoint in doing that. And so I, I don't know what it's going to be. I wish I did because it's now it's under contract before it wasn't. Um, but, uh, R three is the zone we have in town to accomplish the need we have in this area. And it fits exactly with the twenty fifty plan and what the catalyst zone is trying to do.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions or comments for Mr. Stricki? All right. Thank you, sir. At seven fifty-four, we will open the public hearing. Shelley, anyone signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
All right. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak? All right. At seven fifty-four, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Move that we adopt ordinance number twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-four.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Seven A.
Resolution number forty-three dash twenty-two, a resolution setting forth to add Valoryum property tax rate to be considered for adoption for the twenty twenty-two tax year. Said rate to be zero point five seven five two per one hundred of assessed value and call in a public hearing prior to the adoption of the tax rate in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. Um, there is no citizen speaker signed up.
Good evening, ma'am, counsel. So this is a follow-up to our discussion earlier on the budget. Um, and essentially, uh, a resolution propos, setting the proposed tax rate so that we can move forward with public hearings on that tax rate. So, uh, just a quick overview, um, the increase in debt or the INS rate, as we spoke earlier, for, uh, voter-approved sale of general obligation bonds for the new public safety facility. Uh, the primary cause for the rate increase on the INS side. A decrease in the maintenance and operations rate, um, as we also spoke to earlier. Um, going from, uh, going to four three four one compared to twenty twenty-two's budget of four three five eight. Uh, so again, um, a reduction on the M and O and an increase on the INS. Um, and the debt portion of that increase is all related to public safety, no additional debt. So what we're asking for today is for council to approve, uh, the resolution as stated. Um, if approved, then a public hearing, uh, will be set for adopting the rate on eight twenty-three and will require two readings. And the resolution is, um, as follows, posted or the motion is as follows. And I believe you have the resolution.
Yes. So as of tonight, no public hearing. We are simply adopting this resolution.
Just the resolution. We're not actually adopting a tax rate. Um, just moving forward with the proposed tax rate.
Yes.
Uh, for which we will publicize, um, in newspapers, uh, for a public hearing, uh, to be held on the twenty-third.
Counsel, we did have all of this information earlier. Anyone have any further comments to make?
No.
All right. Do I hear a motion? We need to approve, we need to approve the resolution. So we do.
Well, I, I make a motion to approve resolution number forty-three dash twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Joe, thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand. I know the evening is getting long. All right. Thank you. You are ready to go. All right. I think we are getting towards the end. State, counsel. Shelley, seven D.
Resolution number fifty dash twenty-two, a resolution approving negotiated settlement between the Atmos Cities Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Corporation regarding the company's twenty twenty-two rate review mechanism filing. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Sorry.
Mr. Attorney.
Mayor, well, mayor looks at me like, oh gosh, not another one. Um, yeah, so you're almost there. And so I'll make this as brief as possible. You all, um, are, uh, veterans. I imagine even, um, council member Herring has, uh, is reminded of this process. This is, uh, one resolution before you, one reading, uh, and it's an annual agenda item. And it's basically how, uh, Atmos presents its, um, proposed annual rate increase to you and how you all, uh, can approve that. Atmos, uh, more, more, uh, formal and certainly legal name is Atmos Energy Corporation. And they're, they operate locally as Atmos Gas and they're the provider for the area. Um, the agenda bill, uh, provides history and the current status of the rate review, um, mechanism. And this is a process that the city, as a member of the Atmos Cities Steering Committee, uses to review rate increases requested by Atmos. Um, I think the recitals, hopefully in the resolution, uh, also do a good job of outlining the process and the action involved. And, you know, to, to be as brief as possible, whenever Atmos seeks a rate increase, and they usually do this annually, uh, it must provide notice to the cities it serves, uh, including Kerrville, of course. And then we, um, you all and, and myself, uh, have a right to review that. And, and we do that, uh, through this rate re, review mechanism process. And it's part of this, uh, cities committee, uh, which hires attorneys and consultants and, um, essentially crunches the number, numbers and, which I'm thankful for. And they've been doing this in this, uh, rate review mechanism, uh, since two thousand and seven. And is actually as an alternative to a state process, which take, would take, in my opinion, and I think in Atmos's opinion, would take a great, great deal more time and require a great deal more consultants. And so I think it, it, uh, ended up being a, um, a, a really good, uh, process that both, both sides agreed to. Getting down to this, uh, the item and the issue before you, the company claimed that its cost of service for twenty twenty-one uh, entitles it to an additional system-wide revenues of a hundred and forty-one point three million. And that's system-wide. That's of course, not just, not just here. Um, and so after applying this RRM process and analyzing the information presented by both sides, the parties negotiated a settlement whereby Atmos would receive an increase of a hundred and fifteen million from the Atmos Cities and that their territory, um, as, as new rates, which would become, which will become effective October first of this year. Um, and the steering committee, its legal counsel consultants recommend that cities adopt the resolution before you, approve ring this, uh, negotiated rate settlement and, um, resolving the RMRM filing and implementing the rate change. And the, the final thing I'll say is I'll, I'll talk about the, um, implication to an a, average residential homeowner. Uh, it'll increase their rate by approximately, uh, four sixty a month, which is about a six point seven percent increase. And the increase for an average, uh, commercial usage will be fourteen dollars and thirty-four cents a month or four point three percent increase. So that's the, uh, those are the numbers before you tonight. If, um, I recommend that you adopt the resolution as presented, which will, um, approve their rate increase, which will be effective October first of this year.
Questions, counsel? Anyone? Okay. We really don't have a whole lot of choice.
Well, you know, to be fair and to give you all the options you do, but you would be in a fight by yourselves.
Yeah.
The only other city, there's a couple of cities, um, that I'm aware of that are, um, that challenge this every year by themselves. One, one of which is Dal, Dallas, which I assume has a, uh, a, a little bit bigger of a budget than Kerrville. But, which isn't to say that you couldn't do that. But, um, I think based upon, um, what I know of our attorneys and the consultants they use, I think this is about as fair of a price you're going to get.
All right. Uh, counsel, if there are no comments or further questions, do we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number five zero dash twenty twenty-two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I need to wake you guys up.
I know.
Or something, right? All right. Seven C. Shelley?
Professional service agreement for special districts consulting and administrative services with Munich Cap Inc. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Madam Mayor, members of council, you want to do some jumping jacks before we get started?
Yes, sir.
This should take just forty-five to fifty minutes and we should be. What you have in front of you is a, a draft contract agreement between Munich Cap, uh, Services and the City of Kerrville. Um, as you might remember, Munich Cap came before us and gave a presentation on various, uh, special district financing tools that are available through the, through the state legislative board, or through state law, sorry. Um, and so what we have done is, is we've gone to them and asked them for a feasibility, sort of preliminary, uh, agreement to allow them to help us because it's a specialty, right? When folks drop these public improvement district or mud district or MDD district requests on us, there's a whole lot of legwork that gets done. We have limited staff time, as we've talked about earlier during the budget discussion. Uh, and the best part about the way that these processes work is that when they want to request a public improvement district, well, we can request that they pay these folks to act on our behalf to then give us their assessment of the feasibility and their recommendations on these projects. So that's what you have in front of us. Um, and it's the draft because we're kind of going back and forth on just a few points with, uh, our legal team and their legal team. Uh, and just making sure all the Ts are dotted and Is are crossed. So it's really, um, you know, what you've seen recently is public improvement districts. But what we want this to be is for them to help us with public improvement districts, uh, MDDs, mud districts, whatever may come, come before us, uh, to help us with that, our understanding. And, and, and the developers can request this at any time. They could drop a petition for, uh, a mud district on us, in which case we'd have to respond. So it would help to have someone on staff, not staff, but on consultation to help us manage that, that conversation expeditiously. So really at this portion of it, it is not, um, consultation and administration. So we wanted to truncate these things because really we just want to study the feasibility of these projects as they come before us. So sort of leading up to, uh, creating a service and assessment plan for a PID, which is kind of how they would finance it, how much those assessments would be per lot, uh, how they would be able to do bonding, uh, all of those things leading up to, is this a good idea or is this not a bad idea? And the best part about this, again, is that it's at no cost to the city. Because what we would require the developers to do is we would require them to provide us with funding to cover the costs that are provided by muniservices. So they would deposit funds in the amount of twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars with us, at which point muniservice would start, Munich Cap, sorry, would start providing those services, uh, figuring out the assessments, talking with their engineers, depleting those funds that are again, the developers' funds, right? And then as those funds get lower, if they're not done with their assessment, we go back to the developer and say, this is, there's more work that needs to be done. The city is in no way going to cover the cost of that because this is solely for the benefit of your development. Provide some additional funding to help cover the cost or not to help, to entirely cover the cost of that. And so that's the mechanism, which is a little bit confusing sometimes. Uh, so I just want to make sure that's clear. Developer, right? Munich Cap, our representative, and the city does not pay Munich Cap. We just sort of pass that money through, but they work solely for our benefit to help us understand, to help us get a better, uh, concept of what, what essentially turns out to be a, usually a pretty big project. And with that, I can go on to the part B, which is the forty-five minute section.
Wait just a minute.
I can stop.
No, I just, I just appreciate you, um, helping us learn what this is all about because we came to you several weeks ago, um, as a result of a meeting that we attended, and we didn't have a clue. So thank you for helping us get up to speed.
All, all questions are good questions.
Is this in any way a negative for developers? I mean, if they're serious, they should be happy to do this.
Well, they should. I mean, it's the same way that if you, when we tell developers that, you know, if you, if you're really serious, you have to come figure out what your water and your wastewater capabilities are. And you have to, you have to pay the engineering for the understanding of that. And everyone is required to do it. Nobody wants to do it, right? But, uh, but, but it's, it's a necessary step in their process. So, you know, this one, there, there really is a huge benefit to them because this is a public finance. I mean, this is a financing tool that allows them to recoup those funds a little bit quicker, uh, through the sale of those bonds if they, if it goes that far. Um, and given the high price of land and the high price of building materials and all of that, uh, you see more and more of these throughout, not only the state of Texas, but I imagine whatever states versions of those are across the country. So, um, I think it's a, it's a beneficial portion. Now, is, the challenges of that are that there is an additional assessment that goes to that house. But presumably, the concept being that those homes would sell for a little bit less. So it kind of offsets itself. Lot of positives, I guess.
Uh, Joe, questions, comments? Brenda, you're good?
I'm good.
Roman?
Good.
Kim? All right. Do we have a motion? Recommended action on the second page, please.
I'll move, I'll move to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a professional services agreement with Munich Cap Inc. for consulting and administrative services.
Second from Kim. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. We are at the end of the evening unless.
We do.
We have, we have.
We have two items. Sorry.
Oh, or, where am I?
Item eight, uh, for executive session.
Uh, Mr. Hoppe, we do not have to go into executive session.
We can defer those items for now. I know we're getting late into the night. Uh, there's nothing pressing on those. We can, we can push to the next meeting. That should be fine.
Are you all in, in agreement? Okay. How quickly you respond.
I'm fine doing it unless anybody else does not want to.
Fine doing what?
Going into executive session unless you all don't want to.
You want to go into executive session?
I said, I'm fine. I'm fine with it. We're here. This is what we set our Saturday time for and so.
Fine with me. No problems either way.
I'm as tough as you guys. I can go.
Okay.
All right, Kim.
I'll, but, sure.
I, I guess you have willing participants. So, all right.
We need a.
We will adjourn to, oh, you make the motion?
I, I'll move to go into executive session under sections five five one point zero seven one, zero seven two, and zero eight seven for items eight A and eight B.
Second. All right. We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. And at eight eleven, we will adjourn into executive session. At eight twenty-six, we have returned. We will close executive session. Counsel, uh, there is nothing to report. Counsel, is there anything for future agendas? All right. Do, we are adjourned at eight twenty-six. Good night.
I feel like it's ten o'clock for some.